Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:00 on Wednesday, November 9th. Time for our regularly scheduled City Commission meeting, and we have a public hearing that begins at 6:00. Without further ado, it is my honor and privilege to introduce Dr. Brad Clayton, who is the Senior Reverend for Faith Presbyterian Church and who is my Reverend. And he is joined by his beautiful wife, Juland, as well. Thank you so much. Will you please stand for the invocation?
Let us pray. Dear God, on this day after Election Day, we pause and give you thanks. We're thankful for our freedom, for the right and the privilege to vote. We know there are many around the world who do not have that freedom, and we are grateful for that right. And we are thankful for those who came before us and laid the foundations on which we stand. We also pause today and apologize for the ways that we use and abuse that right, for the ways that we take our rights for granted. We're sorry for the ways that elections and campaigns can bring out the worst in us, pitting us against each other, causing us at times to turn allies into enemies and to abandon our better nature. We lament the growing polarization in our world. We lament that our politics have transformed from a spirit of debate to a spirit of hate. As this new day dawns, we pray that a new spirit will fall upon us too, a spirit of unity and devotion to the greater good. Bless our city officials and their families. Rekindle in them that sense of purpose that called them to public office once before, not a desire to rule but a desire to serve, not a desire to defeat each other but a desire to work together, a spirit of building up rather than tearing down. As these city officials model that path for us, we pray that spirit will be contagious across our city, so that neighbors will be called to serve and help each other, that we will not just fight for advantages for our children but for all children, that we will not care not only for the health and safety of our neighborhood but for all neighborhoods, that we will not only seek opportunity and justice for ourselves but opportunity and justice for all. Let us be inspired once more. Let us dream once more. Let us believe in each other and in your call once more to love our neighbors as ourselves. We pray this all in the name of our faithful, gracious, and loving God.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Clayton, thank you so much for the invocation. I have to admit, I'm pretty impressed. That was pretty long for a Presbyterian minister. That was almost a little Methodist or Baptist there. That was good. Hey, man, I love you. Thanks for being here for me today. Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Items 8.01 and 8.02 have been pulled from your consent agenda at the request of Commissioner Porter. They've been renumbered 9.01 and 9.02 respectfully.
Okay. One more time. 8.01 and 8.02 has been pulled.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem. And renumbered 9.01 and 9.02.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, colleagues? Seeing none, let's move forward. Do we have any presentations today?
No, sir.
Do we have any announcements before the City Commission?
No, sir.
Okay. We are on item number 7.01, the Independent Ethics Board 2022 Annual Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Dwight Floyd, the Independent Ethics Officer, will present the Independent Ethics Board 2022 Annual Report.
Mr. Floyd, good to see you, sir.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon to all of you, to the mayor, City Commission members, to city employees, citizens, and any others that are present. I am here on behalf of the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board. The City Ordinance requires that the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board provide an annual report to the City Commission. So that's the purpose of my being here, and I will be brief. In 2014, the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board was established through a referendum. As I stated, the City Ordinance Ethics Code in Section 2-14B requires that the Board give an annual report to this City Commission. To summarize, the Board continues to make progress. In February 2022, the City Commission held an ethics workshop to consider recommendations by the Ethics Board. We were given a seat at the table and allowed to discuss the recommendations. We didn't get everything that we wanted, but the changes that were adopted provided the Ethics Board with more tools to fulfill the Board's obligations. During the past year, we put a lot of emphasis on training. We conducted in-person training with elected officials, and this was my first time providing the training directly to the elected officials, and I thought it was very fruitful, and it was an opportunity for us to engage and for the Board to clarify its perception of its role. We've given the opportunity to conduct ethics training to 76 high school students for the Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, a program that is well-run. Participants were high schoolers. They were brilliant children. They were very engaged in the training, and I counted it a privilege to be able to share in their future. We continue to improve annual training required for all employees, and the response, especially among those who ask for advisory opinions, says that it is effective. I am pleased to say that the Board continues to attract highly qualified and professional individuals. For example, Attorney Gwendolyn Graham resigned from the Board last year to become the Assistant Secretary for Legislation and Congressional Affairs at the U.S. Department of Education. She was replaced by Patrick Kelly, who served as a police chief in two municipalities and as chairman of the Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission, which gives oversight to law enforcement and correctional officers. Finally, I want to share this comment from page 2 on the report, and you have a digital copy. The hard copies are actually on the way, fresh from the printer, so I'll make sure you get a hard copy of the... A hard copy. But on page 2, I make this remark. "The work of the Ethics Board and staff is administrative, yet we produce in a highly political environment. Moreover, we function amid expectations that are often misinformed and unrealistic as people frequently confuse their personal values with the ethics standards specified in the Ethics Code. Thus, the charge is not just to implement rules and execute procedures, but to consistently communicate the boundaries upon which the Board has jurisdiction. Last, the staff, which includes Attorney John Reed, Administrator Specialist Lucy Atkins, and myself, the Board members, which includes the Chair, Carlos Ray, who is General Counsel for the Florida Senate, Brian Smith, who is Vice President of Student Affairs and the Ambusman for Florida Indian University, Mr. Ernie Payne, who's here with us today, retired from the Florida Department of Financial Services and was appointed by this City Commission, Attorney Ruby Saymar Bar, who operates a nonprofit law office with a social service referral component, Ms. Kristin Costa, who is a physician assistant and was selected by the Board, Ms. Robin Blank, who is the Chief Compliance and Ethics Officer for Florida State University, and Mr. Patrick Kelly, who I mentioned earlier. We are all committed to doing what we can to ensure that the public's trust in our... to ensure the public's trust in our city government."
Mr. Floyd, thank you very much. Certainly appreciate it. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you all. We're on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled?
Yes, sir. 801 and 802.
Excellent. 801 and 802 have been renumbered 901 and 902.
Will consent, Mr. Mayor?
Before we get to the motion, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
All right. The Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox seconds it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 9.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval for an award for the installation of gas, main, and electric conduits to Equix Energy Services. This was done by way of an RFP. The selection committee has made a recommendation of the award. If approved, the contract would be for three years with an optional two-year extensions on this matter. Tony Ginn, our General Manager of Electric Gas, is here if you have any questions on this item.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Porter, I believe you pulled it. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just had a few questions, and Mr. City Manager is familiar. We got an email, and there was a little bit of some background information there. So I'll start with my first question. What exactly is the fiscal impact that we're expecting? I know that there is a cost proposal element to the RFP. Do you have... I know it sort of depends on the level of services. I'm just curious, a ballpark figure, what we have in mind.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a varied fiscal impact, so it's only the work is... we need to use it. So a couple million dollars or several million over the life of the contract, possibly.
Okay. And I know the question was raised, why are we installing more infrastructure supporting natural gas when we are planning to transition? And Mr. City Manager brought up, considering that we're looking into renewable natural gas and green hydrogen, and I assume that those would be using the same infrastructure, correct?
That's correct. That's what we're looking for in the future, continue to evaluate all of the different technologies that come on board. But what's being worked towards is that an alternative fuel would be used, and we would use that same infrastructure.
Okay. And I know that there are other energy alternatives we've considered. Of any other that we might consider, are others other than renewable natural gas and green hydrogen something that could also use that infrastructure? I mean, I imagine something like solar would not be using that infrastructure.
No, it would not. That would be for like a fuel, like a natural gas, or like you mentioned, for that kind of fuel. But we are then also looking, as we're developing our clean energy plan, all the other types of resources that we can use.
Okay. Thank you. And those are all my questions. I really appreciate you taking the time, and I intend to support the item. I just... This is something that's really important to our community, and I got a couple of questions, and I thought it was important that we have a public discussion about it in case others were interested as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend the staff for their forward thinking. I think it shows that we are a leader in this area and are committed, as our community is, to renewable energy and being carbon neutral by 2050, hopefully by 2035. And so, Mr. City Manager, I want to commend you on the leadership that you've provided, but certainly the work that staff has done in this regard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
It's been properly moved and segmented. Moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, segmented by Commissioner Williams-Cox. No further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on 9.02. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item seeks your approval to accept and expend grant funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as part of the fiscal year 2023 Highway Safety Plan. This grant is a $50,000 grant, and it requires no match. It has to do with the seatbelt safety and overall traffic safety. Chief Revel, TPD Chief Revel is here to answer any questions if you have them on this item.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. That was polled by Commissioner Porter. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just like the last item, I am supporting this item as well. I just had a couple of questions that I wasn't able to get answered before today. What is, you know, sounds like a dumb question, what do you consider to be high-visibility traffic enforcement? What exactly does that entail?
It is just that. It is marked vehicles, being very obvious, being very purposeful, and being seen and being out in the community in high numbers.
Okay. And how much time usually, if this question makes sense, do we devote to doing this without this kind of grant?
Without the grant?
Yeah.
It's a part of every officer's daily observations, you know, making sure our community's safe through all the traffic enforcement that they do. But obviously, seatbelt violations are a primary offense, so if an officer sees that, they can certainly stop for that in and of itself. So it's a part of their daily activity to quantify exactly how many hours or whatever spent. There's probably no way to do that.
And this might also sound like a ridiculous question. Do we know, in fact, whether it does have an impact on people's... people wearing seatbelts?
As far as injuries and fatalities?
Well, as far as whether, I understand, of course, that seatbelts, wearing one, reduces fatalities. But whether this kind of enforcement results in higher usage of seatbelts?
We certainly believe it does. We certainly have seen the impact, especially around high schools, when we do the click at our ticket. We've seen results of more compliance with those issues when they know we're out, when they see us out, when they know that's an emphasis of what we're doing. We certainly see more compliance in those type of times. And anytime we get somebody to wear a seatbelt, they're safer, and that forward, that makes our community safer.
Okay. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve acceptance of the grant.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Mayor Pro Tem. Chief Revel, once again, I just want to say thank you to the men and women of law enforcement for everything that you do for this community. Y'all do an amazing job. It's been a busy couple of weeks, and we certainly do appreciate it. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on the introduction of ordinances, 11.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 22-Z-30, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on .95 acres at the northwest intersection of Pablo Avenue and Centerville Road, as and in the City of Tallahassee Neighborhood Commercial C1 from Light Industrial M1 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommendation is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 22-Z-30 and Set the First and Only Public Hearing for December 7, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the Board Doc system.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Great. The action is simply the introduction of ordinance, but we can take up comment and provide the acceptance of the international... the introduction of the ordinance if need be. Any comment? Probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, segmented by Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on policy formation, 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me tee this up. I'm going to ask Angela Baldwin to come forward, and I really want to give her and her team credit for this. This is something that we've heard about, but this is the final action to accept, to authorize the acceptance of a $5.1 million grant related to the EPA's Diesel Emissions Reduction Act. This will enable us to accelerate the purchase of electric buses. You originally acted on this back in April, and it was to apply for a $4.5 million grant. We've got a little more information, and we were able to achieve a $5.1 million grant. I think we'll take it. I'm hoping you'll approve it. And it's just really good news. Obviously, we're ahead of schedule with the electric buses, and I just wanted to provide Angela an opportunity to share a few words about this and to acknowledge the good work of her and her team. Angela?
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you for providing a great synopsis of the information, and good afternoon, everyone. So, earlier this year, at the April 6th meeting, the City Commission approved Star Metro's submission of a $4.5 million grant application to the FDEP for its Volkswagen Settlement and EPA's Diesel Emissions Reduction State Grant Program. As the manager mentioned earlier, during the application process, working hand-in-hand with our fleet management department, the team identified two additional eligible diesel buses that could be taken out of service with increased grant funding. This application with the specific criteria that's outlined before you was successful, and in August 2022, the city received an award letter with the amount of $5.1 million to be used towards the purchase of electric buses and decommissioning of diesel buses. If approved, these grant funds will be received in installments as reimbursements over the next five years for acquisition of five buses. So in summary, our requested and recommended action is commission approval to adopt the resolution and accept funding from the Volkswagen Settlement and the EPA's Dara State Grant Program. And also, I'd like to thank our Star Metro team and our fleet management team for their work and their efforts in this application and efforts to get us closer to our electrification of our fleet by 2035. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful work. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Questions, direction, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Angela, I want to thank you and the staff at Star Metro for the work that you do. I mean, it seems like every agenda item, we've got some item where you've been proactive in seeking funding for our system, which is primarily funded through, or at least to a large degree, from our general fund for Star Metro. This, too, again, helps us to achieve that goal of becoming carbon neutral by 2050, having an all-electric bus fleet. And again, I want to commend you for the leadership that you've provided in that area. Recently, of course, we saw where you all provided free transportation for people who wanted to get to the polls, to vote, to exercise their civic responsibility, the rise that we give for our students, to help them get to school and places that they need to get. So Star Metro plays a very important role in our community in a number of ways, and so I wanted to commend you for the leadership that you've provided in that regard. I did have a couple of questions. One is kind of an update, and the other is a question. The update would be, where are we with, or how effective has the changes that we made to the dial-a-ride services been thus far?
So actually, Commissioner, thank you for that question. With our dial-a-ride services, at this time, we're still working through the options program. I think it's that... that's what you're referring to, our TNC program. So we're working with our procurement department and to work to get that program implemented. So you should see something fairly soon on that.
Okay. And then, too, I know the decision has been made to discontinue advertising on our buses to promote the programs that are sponsored by the city. What kind of impact is that going to have on the budget for Star Metro?
So, Mr. Manager, there's advertising. Advertisement revenue is a small portion of what we do at Star Metro, and so we don't anticipate it to be a large impact. As you mentioned earlier, that we are looking forward to advertising and promoting some of our city services and just, you know, what we do throughout the city.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to pile on and say thank you, Angela, and to your team. I'll just mention that just yesterday, we received a call from a resident who had some impediment for getting some disabled individuals out to be able to vote. You all sprang into action and were able to get there and get them out so that they could do their civic duty. And I understand you all did three runs of that yesterday. So thank you for being responsive and not having a whole lot of red tape we have to go through to make sure that we get people where they need to get to in our city. So thank you all for thinking out of the box and being able to make that happen on yesterday. So with that, Mayor, I would make the motion that we accept the option number one.
Second.
Option number one's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, segmented by Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Porter, for questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, since Commissioner Richardson brought up this question about advertising and bus wrapping, have we ever considered, as we make whatever changes we make, to not have, if at all possible, the windows of our buses be wrapped? I've read that this can be a potential safety concern if people do not know what is happening inside a bus, and you've got people potentially, you know, vulnerable or hostage. In other cities, that's been something that they've considered when discussing bus wrapping. Just something I thought I'd make a note of.
Absolutely. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you very much. We are on item number 12.02. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item, I'll invite Dr. Campbell Thomas forward. He's going to provide a brief presentation. But this item seeks your approval to authorize $1 million towards Phase 2 of the Tallahassee Housing Authority's Orange Avenue Apartment redevelopment project. You know, groundbreaking just took place for Phase 1. This would be Phase 2, and I believe this will put in place the final financial pieces necessary to move forward with it. Our staff has worked hand in glove with our counterparts at the county. I know you, as a CRA board, have discussed this matter as well. I think this has been a very good solution for something that's immediately in line with your priorities of affordable housing in our community. Dr. Thomas has a presentation with some details, numbers of units, and things of this nature, and he'll share it at this time.
Wonderful. Dr. Thomas, thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, city manager go, and respective appointed officials at the diocese. Going to give you a brief overview of how our commitment that this commission made in the county as well since 2017 on this Orange Avenue development. Phase 2, as you can see, is 160 units, and you can see it's going to be a mixed family unit, a great focus on those at extremely low and low income, set aside for 6% AMI or below, and 32 at market rate. You can see that there's been a commitment and an investment, not only from the city but from the county as well and the CRA. And today, we're asking for our continued commitment for this project to help them with their gap funding by an additional $1 million, and that would just be an amendment to the letter that we've already have with them as far as our commitment. And the county will be taking up a similar option as well on the 22nd of this month. So we are recommending Option 1 to you at this time.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
That's great. Looking for direction. Mayor Pro Tem?
Move that we adopt Option Number 1 as recommended by staff.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, segmented by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Got Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Thomas, I was wondering if you could correct me if I'm wrong. So right now, what we're moving forward with is, so we're hoping $1 million from the county, $1 million from the city, and then the discussion we had at the CRA was up to $2 million. Was it 2.5 originally that you needed, correct? Ms. Williams? Okay. And so, that's obviously $3 million, and that adjustment, we presume, will come from a reduced CRA contribution? I mean, I guess I'm wondering, the request was 2.5 million in addition to the two.
That's what I need to know.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was my clarifying question. All right. Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to support this item, but I did have a question, Mr. City Manager. This wasn't part of our budget discussion of the budget we just approved, right?
Actually, I think Dr. Thomas can probably help on this one. The funds to be used were part of what you have assigned in the rescue plan, so that... so you assigned a certain amount of dollars for housing. This fits within that, and so that was approved. And Dr. Thomas, correct me.
That is correct. Commissioner, City Manager.
That is correct. Commissioner, uh, City Manager, it's part of our, um, funding from our ARPA dollars, our existing ARPA funds.
Okay. And I just want clarification, because when we were having our budget conversation, um, we specifically discussed reserving ARPA dollars for future deficits, and I'm wondering how this impacts future deficits.
Mr. Man?
I can answer that. So, that was a portion of the dollars. There's, you set aside a certain number for revenue makeup, but you also carved out a considerable amount for housing and other, other services. So, this comes out of that intended category that you've already approved.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a point?
Sure. Commissioner Williams Cox?
I think it's important for us to note that this is, uh, reserved, not writing a check today. Uh, just as a discussion we had in CRA, um, we, they asked for a, uh, commitment letter, um, but the funds would not be needed until 2025. So, um, we're not talking about writing a check for a million dollars today.
That's correct.
Or tomorrow. It's, it's to reserve it for that time, um, in 2025, or at such time that it is needed.
Motion's been made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. Uh, this item seeks your approval for a leave buyback at the conclusion of this calendar year. You'll recall that it's been authorized the last two years. Uh, we found it to be beneficial for those employees that couldn't take, uh, all of their leave, and that would be rolled over, uh, and essentially become, um, a, a long-term liability for the city potentially. Uh, it has been successful, uh, and we're once again asking for your approval of this. If approved, it would apply to all city employees, including those members of the bargaining units and police and fires. They've reviewed it and, um, and agree with this, this action, if you approve it.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Do we have any further comment? Commissioner Williams Cox?
Um, I want, I wholeheartedly would like to support this, and I want to just thank our, uh, our City Manager and his, and his team for thinking of ways and looking at ways that, that we can continue to reward our staff.
Right.
You know, once upon a time, you know, I'm, I'm just old enough to remember the Christmas club we used to have at the, at the Bank of Credit Union so that we could afford Christmas. And I think that what this, what this does, it, it helps our employees not have to rely on a Christmas club, but to be able to benefit from the work that they've put in and the time that they've earned. And so, uh, I move that we accept option number one.
Thank you.
Option number one's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Blair, if you wouldn't mind, please, uh, let's redouble our efforts to communicate with all employees on this particular item. I do realize that sometimes the collective bargaining units might not completely understand it and therefore missed out on the opportunity last year. So, we need to make sure that all of our employees truly understand, uh, this incredible advantage that's before us. Appreciate it. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We're on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is, uh, the 2022 Annual Report, the Tallahassee Community Resilience Plan Report. Dr. Thomas and his staff, including Adam Jacobs, uh, take the lead on this, and this is our opportunity to share with you the progress that's taking place. Let me ask Dr. Thomas to, to tee up the item, and then, um, uh, Adam Jacobs will, uh, make the presentation.
Mayor Commissioners, again, we, um, thank you for this opportunity. Just going to give you a brief overview of our community resiliency plan. Um, I'm very privileged to have with me, as, um, City Manager Goad has said, Adam Jacobs. He's our Sustainability and Resiliency Manager. And I probably aside from Michael Olson, there's probably nobody more of an expert on this issue than Adam is, and, uh, we're certainly glad to have him with us. Just want to give you an overview of what you'll be hearing today briefly. Um, the four goal areas in our resiliency plan, public safety and preparedness, hazard mitigation, and climate adaptation, equity and social cohesion, and planning and integration. And I can tell you that Adam will go into a brief little detail about where we're meeting those goals. We're very proud of it. And, um, Adam, do you have Kelly here with you? We just hired Kelly. She's our Sustainability Coordinator. Kelly, if you'll come forth and sit up here next to Adam. Kelly is a new hire. She's going to give us a tremendous amount of asset when it comes to natural sciences, environmental planning. Um, great to have her. She'll tell you a little story. When I was principal at RICAS, I actually recruited her for the International Baccalaureate Program. She said no at that time as a middle schooler, so I'm glad that she, the Lord had her circle back to me, and I was able to have her say yes, because she's well qualified for the job. We're welcome to have you, and welcome aboard, Kelly.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, uh, for the opportunity to present today. As Dr. Thomas pointed out, the city's making tremendous efforts and progress toward a greater resiliency. Um, we'd like to quickly highlight some of that progress. So, you see before you go, one of the resilience plan addresses public safety and preparedness, and saw movement on actions that range from funding human services needs and resilience hubs to expanding neighborhood prep and more. One of the many highlights in this goal area includes the city's allocation of $32 million to the Community Human Services Partnership. Goal Two addresses hazard mitigation and climate adaptation, and saw progress on many fronts, uh, including mitigating tree hazards, advancing clean energy and energy efficiency, and constructing complete streets. A significant highlight under this goal area is the $67 million allocation to purchase low and no emission vehicles. Goal Three addresses equity and social cohesion, and saw progress on a variety of actions, including the preservation of existing housing stock, moving the neighborhood first plans forward, expanding opportunities for youth, and improving transit access. Uh, one of the significant highlights, um, under this goal is the graduation of 122 participants, Dr. Thomas, from the Tempo Program. Goal Four addresses the integration of resiliency throughout the city and included actions such as an update to the Green Print Sustainability Framework, the use of community development block grant funding to support resilience hubs, and the continued diversification of our local economy. Uh, highlights in this area included the city receiving an additional $157,000 to help fund backup power generation at the Jack McLean Community Center, um, and over $720,000 allocated for hard end projects at the city's designated resilience hubs. So, these are just some of the highlights of the progress that's been made over the last three years since the adoption of the Community Resilience Plan. As we move ahead, we'll, we'll continue to collaborate with departments across the city and implement in the plan, and we look forward to continuing to move the needle toward greater resiliency across the city. Thank you.
Yes, sir. That, that concludes the presentation. We ask you to accept this year's report.
All right. Uh, any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right.
Move acceptance of the, uh, option one?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, Commissioner Porter for comment?
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, with, with the storm a couple of weeks ago, with Tropical Storm Nicole that may be coming, with COVID and with everything, this is so important. It's kind of that thing that no one knows we need until we really need it, and it's too late. And I have always been really impressed with the thoroughness and thoughtfulness in this kind of preparation. And so, I, I do want to thank you, and, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Adam, I'm a big fan. You do great work. Keep it up. Thank you. Kelly, welcome to the family. All right. All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other business come before us? Under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
We have a scheduled public hearing at 6 o'clock. We stay in adjourned until then.
We do have one unadjourned speaker. Would you like to take them now?
No, we'll take it up after the, uh, public hearing.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned. Gentlemen, it is 6:01 in the evening, the time for the City of Tallahassee publicly noticed, uh, public hearing. Uh, before we get started with the, uh, public hearing, I'm afraid to announce that, uh, recently, we lost a member of the Tallahassee Police Department, uh, to unrelated work causes. But nonetheless, we lost a member, Lieutenant Adam Miller, and I do think it's appropriate for us to take a moment of silence, uh, in his honor. Thank you. We have three items on the public hearing this evening. 14.01, Madam Attorney, if you want to walk us through?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-0-25, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section Six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, southeast of the intersection of Capital Circle, Southeast and Woodville Highway, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-0-25.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker, Sean Marston.
Mr. Marston, you name an address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, 2851 Remington Green Circle. Um, this parcel was recently approved for a land use change from rural to suburban and was rezoned to R3. As part of the 2022 Comp Plan Amendment, the urban services boundary was extended to include this parcel and is adjacent to, uh, city limits, and we would like to bring this parcel into the city. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Excellent. Next speaker?
No other speakers.
Direction, comment?
Move acceptance of option number one?
Option one's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? See none? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 14.02, Madam Attorney?
Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-0-26, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section Six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, on Southwood Plantation Road, south of Appalachia Parkway, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-0-26.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any public comment?
We have two speakers. Sean Marston is first, and then Ann Rowe.
Mr. Marston, you name an address for the record again, please.
Uh, Sean Marston, 2851 Remington Green Circle. Uh, this parcel was also approved for a land use change from rural to suburban and rezoned to R3. And again, as part of the 2022 Comp Plan cycle, uh, the urban services boundary was extended to include this parcel, is adjacent to existing city limits, and we would request to bring this parcel into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ann Rowe.
All right. Thank you for joining us. You name an address for the record, please.
Ann Rowe, 1213 Victory Garden Drive, and I am the former Public Affairs Director for the Florida Department of Community Affairs.
As you begin, Mayor, I forgot to provide instruction. Speakers have three minutes. There is a light in front of the mayor that's green, and it'll turn yellow and then red at your three-minute mark.
My actual comments are much longer. I'll try to do my very best. Who knew that this book, The Little House, written by Virginia Lee Burton in 1942, and one of my favorites since childhood in the late 1960s, would be so more meaningful today than it was back then? Tells the story of a little house, happiness very rural location, situated on top of a small hill, watching its inhabitants live, grow, and prosper. Time passes, and progress on many levels makes its way to the little house. Inevitably, it is abandoned, pitifully shuttered, and huddling between two large skyscrapers. One day, the great-great-granddaughter of the original owner passes by and recognizes the little house. She and her family arranged to move the little house far from the now overdeveloped city into a rural spot similar to its original surroundings. As a 31-year resident of Tallahassee, Leon County, what drew me here from my home state of Maine is rapidly deteriorating. I'm not alone in my thinking. I implore you, the City of Tallahassee Commissioners, to take the symbolism and lesson this story provides to heart. Do not, do the right thing. Say no. Curb future development of our current green spaces and urban tree canopies, at least those within your purview. Two and a half years ago, I reached out to the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Department's Director to better understand why we're allowing increased development, when we currently have a vast inventory of empty building storefronts, structures, especially along Appalachia Parkway and the surrounding areas, and loss of immense amounts of green space, tree, tree canopies, and forests within, just outside our city limits. I have it on good authority, the City of Tallahassee Leon County wants to grow at all costs. Yet I must ask, what is the true cost to us? My numerous suggestions to the commission, including logical growth management options, the retrofit of existing buildings for housing needs, especially portions of the Governor's Square Mall and Cogurts Center, as well as a sensible public education campaign to lower the ever-growing litter problem in our city, the impacts of unfettered growth is causing our areas wildlife.
You're at three minutes.
All have been ignored. Please know, I'm not against appropriate development, if there's a need.
If you could wrap up your comments, that'd be great.
I, I've just got one more sentence.
Okay, sure.
Uh, contrary to popular belief, there's no need other than the varying levels of house, housing, that could be creatively constructed with potential, uh, ship and CDB, uh, G dollars, in our city's large-scale empty buildings and storefronts, and the reimagining of other storefronts for small businesses.
Thank you.
I'm happy to speak with you about my suggestions, and please know, when the land is gone, it's gone.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No other speakers on this item.
Commissioners?
Move acceptance of, um, option number one?
Second.
Uh, option number one's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? See none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 14.03, Madam Attorney?
Thank you. Item number 14.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-0-27, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section Six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, on Bluntstown Street, south of Park Lawn Street, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-0-27.
All right. Any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
Sean Marston's the only speaker.
Mr. Marston, you name an address for the record, please.
Okay. Uh, Sean Marston, uh, 2851 Remington Green Circle. Uh, this, uh, project site is approximately five acres, comprises of a condominium with 10 buildings in it. Um, it is within the urban services boundary and requesting that the entire parcel be brought into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No further speakers.
Commissioners, um, Commissioner Williams Cox?
I, I have a question, and it may be unrelated, but, um, this particular, um, owner, um, saw something in the media recently that there's been a lawsuit, or something to do with, um, sale of, of homes or property and prices being changed. Is that something you can speak to? I, I'm just asking because I see it's the same name.
Move adoption of ordinance number 22-0-27.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other items come before us at the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We are on unadjourned speakers. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have today?
Mayor, we have one virtual speaker. That's the only speaker, uh, that I have for unadjourned.
Okay.
That will be Erica Holbert. Erica Holbert, and as soon as, uh, she comes up, she can begin.
All right, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, you name an address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Erica Halbert. Sorry, 2021 Warwick Street, 3231. And my remarks are really in regards to the Altera 3100 project.
We're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're having a hard time. Is that audio on our end, or did you?
All right. Can you hear me better?
We can hear you better, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, so my question is regarding the Altera 3100 project here, and it's been billed as affordable housing, but my question is really, who exactly is it affordable for? I mean, we're talking about 253 square foot, basically motel rooms, that go from $770 to $1,145. And the deposits go up to $1,600. So I'm just trying to figure out how we could justify that and call that actually affordable, and how does this help people who actually need affordable housing? You know, as a lot of people pointed out on the actual post about this, you know, just even, for example, at $15 an hour, which the city has not made a minimum wage, by the way, a single person will be paying no less than 45% of their net income monthly on housing, and that's way more than the recommended limit of 1/3. So I mean, I'm just, my, and I guess underlining how it's below market value, it doesn't address the fact that the market value's too high, or market price is too high. And it also does not address the high end. I mean, I'm not exactly sure who can, what single person, number one, can afford to live alone, and also what type of families that are low income can have a family in a 253 square foot apartment, which does not have bedrooms, just one room. And I guess my issue is that we need to have real affordable housing solutions, and number one, I want to figure out how this, I want the city to tell us how they're actually going to do that, like actual affordable housing. And I'd also like some clarification on the actual bidding process and who won that bid.
I'm not understanding what bidding process.
No, as far as like for the developers, was there no bidding process as far as developers go?
That particular property was purchased by a private.
Talking about is a private development. The city did not have any dollars involved.
Okay, so about the rest of my questions.
And it was not affordable, it was workforce.
Okay, so then why is it billed as affordable?
It was, no, it wasn't.
No, it's, I can even show you the post where it's billed as affordable by the City of Tallahassee government.
Okay.
On November 1st.
I'm familiar.
So why is it billed as affordable if it is not affordable?
Well, we're not going to get it, Commissioner, let's don't get in back and forth.
I know, but for clarification for people who are listening, because I did comment on that post.
Yeah.
And what it said was that affordable and workforce housing is a priority of the city. It did not say that that particular property was affordable, but it is.
I think the implication, that's what the implication was to give. I think we both know that.
Well, nonetheless, it was a private development. There was no RFP, there was no government dollars involved, so I would suggest maybe contacting the owner of the property, because I don't think that we're going to be able to answer the questions that you're proposing. But we appreciate you showing up and commenting.
I mean, my question is how it's affordable, you still haven't answered that at all. I believe you can answer that question, because it's not affordable.
Ms. Ms.
And I'm not the only one who's, I'm not the only one who's raised this issue, and the fact that you want to gloss over it and not exactly listen to your constituents, it's very telling.
Well, thank you for showing up. We appreciate you.
Not one single time have you actually addressed my question. Thank you. Thank you for nothing.
That was, that's the last speaker we have on unadjourned.
Is there anybody else here that'd like to speak on unadjourned items? Okay. We'll move into sharing of ideas. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything other than to reiterate my condolences for Lieutenant Miller. I was able to attend the viewing, and I just want to especially extend my condolences to TPD. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate you on your win last night. So now that you're mayor for the next four years, what are you going to do next?
Oh, I'm sure it'll all come to fruition.
You're not going to Disney World, Disneyland, Disney World. Seriously, just want to congratulate you. Looking forward to continuing to work with you to move our city forward. And I will say that I tried to answer the question that was asked, because there, we've done workshops on housing, because there is great confusion about what's affordable. There is a federal definition for affordable housing, not what I can afford, but a federal definition, and that's what we work by, as well as our workforce. And there is a difference between affordable and workforce, and there are other types of housing, low-income housing, that I think that our community needs to continue to be educated on, so that we don't have this kind of conversation that causes more confusion. So I'm hoping that we can do, I don't know what we can do to describe it or explain it more, define it more, except to keep putting the same information out there and hoping that it will be absorbed and understood, because we didn't create the definition. We abide by the definition that the federal government created. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Metlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add on that, no, I don't think $800 for 250 square feet is affordable. I mean, obviously, we're in the same boat, most of the country is, and we have a lot more work to do on housing affordability in the coming months. I wanted to address the incoming storm, Mr. City Manager. Can you give us just a brief update? I got the 5:00 p.m. email. I was interested in, are city facilities open? I know we have a CRA meeting scheduled for the morning.
Right now, we've not canceled any city facilities or city workforce operations. We'll continue as normal. We do believe the storm, the forecast is a little more than what we've seen. It's kind of worsened over the last little bit. We believe there'll be some winds overnight into the morning hours. The peak impact of the storm, somewhere after midday, 1:00 to 5:00 is what we're being told, we'll receive 2 to 4 inches of rain and winds maybe in excess of 40 miles an hour. So we're operationally ready. We've not stopped any services. We certainly may do that if it comes to it. We don't believe we need to at this point. And so we do believe there could be impacts, and we'll stand ready to address those.
Okay. And then finally, as Commissioner Williams Cox said, the campaign season has come to an end, so our TV mailboxes will clear out as Christmas music takes over the airwaves, I think. I do want to congratulate Mayor John Daly as well. You know, now that the election is over, it's time to get back to work for the people of Tallahassee. Look forward to another year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In line with the discussion that Commissioner Williams Cox had in terms of affordable housing, and I hope the young lady is still on the line, because what we have done is change our housing ordinances to make it possible for property owners who either own or purchase abandoned structures like the hotels and apartment complexes around town, to be able to purchase those and make them available as affordable housing for those who can afford that housing. It's not low income. It's not workforce. It's affordable for those individuals that can afford that housing. When we were at, what was it, Aspire, the ribbon cutting we had the other day?
Alteria, I think it was. 3100, I've forgotten the name of it.
That project was 25% occupied the day we had the ribbon cutting. There were people coming into the parking lot seeking to purchase those apartments, studio apartments, the day that we were there. So it's affordable for somebody. It may not be low income, but it is affordable, and we're making that type of housing available to those who seek that type of housing, studio apartments. So it's affordable for somebody. I would also add to that, that we have 2,300 low-income and affordable housing units in the pipeline, and that's what our community needs to understand, that those units will be coming online. The one that comes to mind right off the top of my head, because I'm by there all the time, and it should be coming online very soon, is Magnolia Oaks at the corner of Country Club and Magnolia Drive. That should be coming online very soon. That is low-income housing, and there will be units designated for those who are transitioning from homelessness or houselessness, however you want to describe it. There will be units designated for persons that are transitioning from a homeless situation. So we are addressing that issue. The city does not provide housing. We do partner with agencies like Habitat for Humanity, the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, of which I'm proud to be our representative on the board. We partner with those agencies to provide low-income and affordable housing, but the City of Tallahassee itself does not provide housing in our community, and I think that's the misunderstanding that a lot of people have. In line with that as well, I want to announce, I just got the email today, that Lafayette Gardens Apartments, the low-income apartments on Lafayette Street, next to the moon, will be having their grand opening on November 15th at 11:00 a.m. That is low-income housing, 30% area median income. That is low-income affordable housing on Lafayette Street, behind the Ross Shopping Center on Appalachia Parkway. And we're all, I think, invited to be there. They invited me to come. I hope everybody got the same email. And then lastly, just a question about the Veterans Day events, Mr. City Manager. Have we heard anything about that at this point?
We're in very close contact with them. The parade, I believe, starts at 10:00. Festivities prior to that, first thing on Friday morning. And at this point, it's moving forward. I just talked to our Parks and Recreation Director. There are no conflicts with our resources necessary to support that parade, so as long as the weather is cleared and there's no really unexpected events, I believe it will continue on.
Okay.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, could I interject with the, the same day as the Veterans Day, we're planning to move forward with the showing of The Race to Be Human at 7:30 at Cascade's Park, free of charge. We have a local group who has recorded a old-school song, "Wake Up Everybody," and they're going to kick us off, young people will kick us off for this event. It is for youth, youth groups, and for those who are young at heart, free of charge, please come out. Depending on what Nicole does, the seats might be wet. Bring a towel. But we do plan to move on, because we've already rescheduled it once. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Everybody be safe during the storm, and happy Veterans Day. We stay adjourned.